Meeting minutes, so on the agenda tonight is, first is public input. The second is any new business. Where we have Chief Meany and Officer Manganello. A facility update, staffing changes. The second item is any old business. And then we have the superintendent's report to the committee and future agenda items. So, if we want to start with, is there any, anyone for public input? We've kind of changed this to put it at the beginning of our meetings this year. Seems to be a practice in area towns, and so we figured we'd make that little change.
Just wanted to, I don't know whether you guys can notice this amount, but if you're doing any kind of amendment to make to ask minutes. I know we can, for the April minutes, so I think those were the last ones that were posted online. You guys met in executive session, I think, in the minutes, that's, that made an executive session?
Okay, and that's from April?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, we'll look into that. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, so, let's move on to new business. We have Chief Meany and Officer Manganello here with us tonight. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, if you remember during our budget process last year, we had mentioned that the police department was looking to restore the school resource officer into their budget. They had been one for years, and it was out of the budget for many, many years. So Michelle has been trained and was just waiting for that to be restored in the budget, and it has been, so welcome Michelle and Chief here this evening.
Thank you. The first thing is, it would be a whole lot simpler if she still had her maiden name, because it's Pento. But it's actually Manganello.
Manganello.
And go ahead, try to spell it just fine. Michelle is a Medfield High success story. She graduated in what, 2001?
Correct.
2001. Volleyball?
Yes.
Volleyball. Still coaches volleyball?
At Framingham State University.
Nice for you.
Yep, and we saw the aggressiveness of an assertive girls volleyball team out working hard this morning. Yeah, looking very good. Michelle started working with the Medfield Police Department in 2005. And, you know, she's done the typical patrol-type things and whatnot that all police officers need to do. And then she, it became obvious to me that she enjoyed working in the schools and with the young people. So, she was doing that on a part-time basis while she was working, coming in after hours, before hours, and whatnot, and doing that. Has gone to several training classes specifically directed towards school resource officers. There's a basic one and an advanced one, so she's done both of those. She's done numerous courses on dealing with juvenile issues and juvenile law and whatnot. So, she's very well-versed. I think the school personnel are very comfortable with her. She's a familiar face, and I think this is going to work out very nicely for us. There's also a little bit of history to her family. Her dad is a lieutenant over in the Sherbin Police Department, and she's also married to the townwide known Al Manganello, who started here in Medfield and then transferred over to Walpole. And I think the lure was potentially being able to ride on two wheels as opposed to four. So he's one of the motorcycle officers over there, and he enjoys his work quite a bit. And it's probably just fine that he's in Walpole and you're here in Medfield.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any chance that she's going over to Walpole.
No.
We can put that to bed right now. So, really, I look forward to this greatly. And it's not that I don't like Michael, he's a wonderful person. But Michelle has had to spend a lot of hours riding around with him, checking out school bus stops and locations and routes and all that, and I didn't have to do that. So, this is working out wonderfully as far as I'm concerned, that someone else is doing this. I will give you rides anywhere you would like to, Michael, and, you know, Dr. Marsden can come with us also. Typically, he ends up in the front seat, Michael ends up in the backseat.
That's correct.
But he seems very natural in the backseat of a cruiser. Didn't seem to faze him in the least, he slid right in. And I said, "No, no, 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 you don't have to do that, you can just..." So, it worked fine. So, this relationship is going to be great for the town. She is, you know, very intelligent, has a wonderful personality, you know, can communicate with a wide variety of people, which I have seen her do, and it's going to be a great benefit to both the police department and the school, and the families and the young folks in Medfield. So I think this is a win 360 degrees, very happy about this. And Dr. Marsden and Michael were great supporters to get this done, and went to bat for me to help me out to be able to get the funding for this and get it done. The Warren Committee and the Board of Slick, we're also very supportive, so, good thing all around.
And Michelle's been our go-to person, you know, whenever anything that comes up in the district or something happens on the weekend, you know, Mr. Spurling and Robert are always talking to Michelle on different issues. So, she's a recognizable face in the school, she works at Dale Street, doing some work there, and the younger kids too, so, very happy to have Michelle aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I just have a question, please. So, does this, besides the safety, the bus routes, whatnot, so is this outreach as well? You mentioned at Dale Street, is there like an education series, speaker series? What is?
Yeah, for the last six years, I've been doing a safety program with our fifth graders.
Okay.
It's three weeks throughout the year, and we kind of go over what it is to be a police officer. I kind of go over everything that, you know, we wear on a daily basis, because they have tons of questions. And then we get into more bicycle safety, internet safety, stranger safety. We've been doing that for quite a while, and I believe Officer Clark did it before I did. So it's been a program that's been around for quite some time. And I would love to get into some of the classrooms around here, we just have to work on scheduling and figuring it out.
So, is the idea, is the split time between the high school and the middle school?
I would love to try to get to every school.
Like, I mean, during the course of the day, or just, you mean?
Probably not the course of the day. My goal would probably be, I would be based out of here, and then my goal would be to at least get to every school two or three times a month, whenever need be, whatever the principals need. I have had teachers reach out to me, and I've done law classes up here, the fifth grade program, I've done some things out at Memorial with guest readers, so, I've gone to all the different schools, I think we're just going to try to incorporate it a little bit more.
I must, and you have a huge endorsement from the Sullivan kids, because you were active at Dale.
Yes.
And they always speak, they really enjoyed you and your classes, so...
Oh, great.
That's always nice, you know?
Thank you, yes it is.
Sometimes they're the hardest critics, so...
Yes.
Especially the Sullivan kids.
That's great, welcome. The Sullivan kids.
Exactly.
So, welcome, that's great.
Do you wear like a police uniform, or do you wear sort of a lower?
I do plan on wearing.
Yeah.
Exactly what's on, yep.
Yeah, one of the ideas we have is that I don't want it to be a big deal when there's a cruiser in front of the school, and, "What's going on?" I want it to get to be, okay, police officer in the school, no big deal. And as part of that, Michelle may not know this yet, you know, you just like to spring these things on people in the public setting. When she's at some of the different schools, we'll get some of the other officers who are working in the sectors, there's usually two others working, to come down to the school, walk in the building with her, because it's good for everyone to see how you get around the building, and where things are, where classrooms are, and all that, so that we have a, so that everyone has a greater level of comfort of what the building is like, and it's no big deal to see this in the building, which is what I want. I don't want people to think, "Oh, the police are there, there must be a crisis."
Right. Something bad's going on because it's a cruiser there.
That's just another part of the day. Just going to work us right in, pretty slick and smooth.
So is there going to be an announcement to the kids? Because how would they know that, "All right, there's a cop car, somebody's busted," or some, you know, is there going to be an announcement or something in homeroom, "Don't be alarmed, you know, this is what Michelle, or the officer is doing now, this is part of the development or the community outreach?"
Well, what I think I would do with that is I would leave that up to the educational leader of the building, the principal, and let he or she make a decision as to how they want to do that. But I want it to be just a very comfortable relationship, because then when the difficult things happen, the relationships are already established, and you just go to work.
Right.
I know, you know, Officer Manganello, Manganello is...
Michelle.
Has been in the buildings a lot, and I think the students and the staff are sort of accustomed to it. It's a big help to have it formally on your budget as an SRO, and we really appreciate all the work you did for that, because it certainly benefits us.
It's the way it should be.
Right.
Shouldn't be any big deal, should be just, you know, normal part of the day. Anything else we can offer or answer?
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jase. Thank Michelle.
So, next item is a facility update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just have a short update, but in our September meeting, there'll be a full presentation of all the different things that we've done so far. So the major facility improvements that have been going on this summer, the turf field is about 90% complete, we expect that to be completed on Wednesday, and then we're, the track will start on September 12th. So we're going to be in a situation where the turf is open and used by kids, and then closed again for two weeks, and then open again. It's just, there's one company in New England that does tracks, and we booked them fairly early, and this is the best we could do with September. Westwood just finished their field, and they couldn't even get them to come in, and they're waiting until the spring now, because they just can't get it done. So we felt pretty good about September, it gets the kids in there using the field, and then we'll have to shut it down for a couple of weeks, and then weather permitting, it'll only be two weeks, and we'll get that going. Looking at the Wheelock School, the Boiler Project, again about 85, 90% complete, that's ahead of schedule, we should be in good shape, almost, should be done by the time school starts, but heating season doesn't start until October 15th, so we're in great shape for that. If you remember correctly, the first bid had supplemental heating in there in case it went beyond, that's not in the bid this time, so we saved, I think, $14,000 with that. So we'll be set by part of the second week of September over there, and they'll be firing those up. That's going very, very well. We had a local company win that bid, they've been fantastic, so much so that they've started to do some of the preventive maintenance in the other buildings as well. We've hired them to do that, because we're so impressed with what they were doing here. So that's going on. We had Phase Two of the roof work that's being done at Dale Street. If you remember last year in the pictures, we had that awning redone and some of the work done in there. We actually had to take the roof off the middle section as you go in where the office and the teacher's room is, that whole area there, that roof had to be replaced, so that's just about done. All the board had to be taken out, and then the new roof. You know, you know that's on the list to, hopefully on the list to be replaced at some point, but we can't wait three or four years for that to, we had to get that fixed. It was leaking in in the offices, leaking in the main lobby, and leaking in the teacher's room. So we had to get that done. So that's almost done. We installed 14 cameras around the middle school, and those are all working, including license plate recognition cameras, which actually served us fairly well over the weekend, because we had someone drive in and drive on our practice field, and do some donuts around there, and wreck some of the area, hit a sprinkler head. But we had, we were able to get the license plates, and we're working with the police department right now on that. So that paid off from the, you know, the first week we had them in there. So that's where we are, we have a bunch of little projects going on that we'll put together in a PowerPoint like we did last year for you for September. But again, Michael has done a fantastic job, he's really taken over the grounds in the building department since June, so he's been doing that June, July, August, and will continue until probably the beginning of October on that, which I'll get into personnel in the next agenda item. But I can't thank Michael enough for the work he's done, he's really stepped up, it's a lot to oversee all that, he's overseen all of the cleaning of the buildings and the whole summer work, which is real busy, so, I want to thank Michael for all that work. That's all I have for facility update.
Okay, great.
I'll answer any questions.
Does anyone have anything?
No, but I would, I was, I attended a couple of the meetings on the field, and I think that it's a lot of work managing these projects, and Michael and Dr. Marsden, you know, that's hard, I mean, they can go off skew pretty easily, so you have to constantly be aware of it, and I think that they deserve a lot of credit for those. These are not the garden variety, you know, fix the floors and little things, these are pretty significant projects that they did.
Thank you.
Very well done.
So impressive, even taking the tour tonight and seeing the difference, and that turf is pretty amazing for everyone, all the students that use it, I think it's pretty impressive. And it was actually done in a decent amount of time, I mean, a really good timeframe, so...
Yes, we had substantial completion by August 31st of the field itself, and we'll make that.
That's great.
It was good.
Beautiful field.
It is beautiful. Just a quick question on Dale Street. I know we submitted the, is it called the SOI?
Right.
Last spring. Now, do they send us a letter, like a Dear John letter, "Sorry, you didn't get it this time, and this is why," or, I'm just, how do they let us know, when do they let us know?
So they sent me an email over the summer, just requesting a couple of copies of a different document, that, the document that we sent, the hard copy was a draft document, so they wanted the original. We sent that out to them, and they said they were still processing, so...
Okay.
The last time I was rejected was a roof in Rantham, and we did get a letter stating that we weren't going to get that project, so...
Which kind of get that at the end of the year, you know if you've gotten in sooner, right? They invite you, they invite you to go further into the process as they make those decisions, and it's basically, if you don't hear it from the end of the year, and then they send out a bunch of...
So the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
What did I fully expect to get?
Yeah, my memory is they don't even really tell you why you didn't get invited further.
Right. The one I got did not tell us why, yeah.
Just no.
Just said you're not invited to the party.
Yeah, the one we got last time.
I remember, didn't we get them usually like October? Because now we've gotten a couple.
I think they've changed, I think they changed their calendar, Tim would know more about that.
I don't know when they send those out, but I think it is, they do send them probably at the end of the year.
Yeah, end of calendar year, right.
Our, I was talking on another project with the executive director, and they're probably going to be able to start dealing with number three on the priority list, so they've done the one and twos, three, I think we're like, the first box we've checked is four.
Right.
So I'm sure we're not going to make it this year, because they're still going to get through the threes, and only 20% are not even get selected any given year, so...
But we'll resubmit every year, so we stay in the queue, and then...
And they're going to work down to the four, probably next year maybe even.
Right. So that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to staffing changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So included in your packet was the most recent up-to-date staffing changes, and you'll see that we put in, whether they were replacements, maternity, retirements, et cetera, one-year appointments, all those types of changes that have taken place. I just want to highlight a couple of them. So, really excited about our transition program at the high school. So we were able to hire a doctorate-level psychologist to lead that program, and it's really morphed over the summer, so it was a social worker position, but we really, because we were able to get this person, Dr. Worthley, we're going to, it's going to be a coordinator of social-emotional learning, that's his title. So it's not just running the transition room. So that position is going to initially just work in the transition room and get that all straightened out and set up and develop, which he's done in a couple of other districts prior to coming here. But then, we're going to use his expertise District Y, but we're not there yet, we're probably maybe the second half of the school year, but he's going to be onsite consulting with us, and we're really happy that we could bring him on board. He's just really a good catch that we were able to get from another district, that he was looking for a change, and he was an administrator and wanted to get back into doing some of the work that he would do in a transition room. So, really excited about that, and he'll be in front of you in the committee, doing a presentation, let you know how the transition room is going, and how that all worked out. So you'll be able to meet him.
And what, when will he be in?
He's already started, yeah.
No, but when will he be here to?
Either September, October, wherever you want.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, whenever you want to have him come in. Anytime you let me know, and we'll have him come in.
Okay. I just have a quick question on that. Why, it says on here it's individual contract, because?
So he's in, he has a contract like an administrator does.
Oh, okay.
So that's why you don't see the step for this.
Okay.
He has individual contract. And that was to get him so he'd work additional time in the summer, and then go beyond just working in the transition room.
Okay.
We were able to do that.
I think we couldn't just add a position to the unit A bargaining agreement without...
Right.
Okay, without bargaining for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to just, you know, highlight some of the issues around, we talked about in our June meeting about hiring. So we know that the directive for me to the principals, hire the best person, not the cheapest person. So if you look at down the salary schedule, you'll see we have lots of folks that have come from other districts to come here. You know, we have Masters 45, Step 11, we have Step 13, Step 12, Masters 60, Step 15, which that person came from Wellesley, so that's an expensive person. We wanted to make sure that we hired the best people, and by doing that, you have to pay for that. So, in planning for FY '18, I think we need to look at what we budget for, for new hires, we've been doing Masters Step 6, maybe we need to look at something different, maybe Masters with credits in that step, just to kind of even things out a bit. You know, I think that we do really well salary-wise, we're definitely much more competitive. One of our teachers that we hired, who's a Masters 30, Step 14, got a $21,000 raise coming to Medfield compared to where she was. The place that we don't do well with is health insurance. So I've had conversations with some of our new hires that have, are making more money working in Medfield this year, but it's either a push or they're losing a little bit to come to Medfield, because the health insurance is so expensive here, which we don't have control over as a school district, that's a town. But Michael has been working with Mike on that and the insurance committee, to look at different forms, different plans that will reduce the cost. So many districts are still at a 70-30 split with the district spending, or the town spending 70% and the employee paying 30. I know in the private sector, even our plan is a lot better than what the private sector would get, but for the public sector, it's not great. So we, you know, I've had meetings with teachers this summer, new teachers, where we've negotiated an additional step to cover the loss they're having in health insurance, because the principals felt like this was a great candidate to get, good for our kids, and we had to maneuver that a little bit, maybe give a person one more step to cover some of the loss with health insurance. So just keep that in mind. Salaries are very, very competitive, but it's the health insurance piece that is where we need to work on and do something a little different for our employees, if we're going to stay competitive in that regard.
Isn't a lot of that the choice that the employees made with respect to the kind of plan they have?
Yeah.
Totally out of our hands.
So it is, in the sense that, you can look at it a couple of ways, one is plan design. So I think that the plan design is pretty stable for years and years, the same plan design. So if you look at different ways of designing the plan, it could be cheaper for the employee.
Right.
So there's just different ways of doing it, and the split is not great, you know, the split is 61 or 62, whatever it is. So that's, you can save money in the former town I worked in, we did a huge push for plan design, and then the town gave the employees back half of what they saved. So if they saved $5,000 an employee that first year, which adds up with a lot of employees, they gave that employee 2,500 that first year and said, "Thank you for switching your plan," and then that was an incentive to switch the law. So just different ways of doing things, and I think that, you know, we're in the conversation, you can go to, I think Westwood just went to the GIC, which is a state-funded plan, you can save money there too, so there's all different, it's complex, but I'm just putting it out there that the salaries are much better than they were, and we're very competitive salary-wise, but we lose out on the insurance piece, I got a lot of feedback on that this summer.
So I've got a question, is the town, obviously the town is aware of this, because it affects their employees too. Has this been an issue for them as well, that they're looking to maybe redesign some things, or?
I'm not sure if it's as much, because for them as it is for us. Because we brought it to the attention of the town a couple of years ago, looking at design plan, it's, so there's, you're mandated to have an insurance committee, and the votes are weighted based on the employee's membership. So the schools have the biggest weight in this whole process. So that's why, Michael, it's an open meeting, Michael goes there as an observer, but participates a lot as an observer, because he wasn't appointed as part of the insurance committee. But we're trying to, because he comes from a place where they did it differently, I do as well, so we're trying to steer it in a way that'll be helpful for everyone, save money for the town, but also good for the employee as well. But I think that's ongoing.
Okay.
That's ongoing. A couple other positions I want to highlight, if I could, our Director of Facilities replacement, Jerry McCarty, Jerry is going to begin in October full-time. He is currently the Director of Facilities for the Town of Weston and the Weston Public Schools. So this is something that we've worked with Mike Sullivan, the town, on for about six or seven months now, is how do we, we have all these new buildings coming online in town, we have no real facilities person in town to oversee that, and we certainly have that same need in schools with five buildings. So how can we work together and collaborate to get a position that would do that? So, we work together, Michael, Mike Sullivan and I worked together on this to get this person, we interviewed him, comes highly recommended from a lot of folks, and we signed the contract with him last week. So he needs to just finish out what he's doing in Weston, and it looks like he'll be doing some part-time work in October, and then start full-time here on November 1st. So it's really good timing, because we have a lot of new buildings coming online, obviously at the town side, so they need someone that knows those systems, manages those systems in the past. So Jerry had done it for the Town of Wellesley prior to going to Weston, and now coming to us. So we're happy and pleased about that, and he'll be a great addition to our staff. And he'll also, from our perspective, oversee our buildings and our maintenance and consolato staff too, which he does in Weston right now. And then also, as you know, this is Matt LaCobb, he's last week in district, he's been working to transition our interim, so we have interim Kathy Gaudreau, you know that I've notified you on that. Kathy will begin, actually comes in tomorrow, in a couple of days this week, but then will begin full-time in September for us, and she's going to be on a kind of a different kind of schedule, because she's retired, so she's been the Director of Special Ed in Dedham, and also did an interim in Needham last year. Because she's retired, she can only work so much and only make so much, so that we're going to be on a modified schedule for at least the first half of this year, probably she's working four days a week instead of five days a week, but on call those other days, and we're paying her per diem. So that's, we're still working out that schedule, but she can only make so much, that's just the way it's structured. But she's going to be a great addition, a lot of experience with special education. One thing I liked about our interview, and we talked a bunch, was the fact that she started in elementary, was an elementary coordinator in special education. So we had a great conversation about what those initial conversations look like with parents when they first learn their kid isn't going to be on IP, and how important that is, the emotional piece there, to have that conversation with parents and to understand what the parents are going through, and she was spot-on. So I was real happy with that. Again, has a great track record, Michael worked in Dedham for five or six years, so knows, you know, what she can do, and certainly from the budget perspective, and I got great feedback from the special education and teaching perspective. So, we're happy about Kathy starting, and again, so she'll be, it's really, we locked her in for the entire year, but if we do the search in late fall, early winter, and we have someone that can start, you know, she can step back, and she's okay with that. So those are, you know, we certainly have other positions that are in there, you'll see there are a lot of replacements, a lot of maternity, as you can see.
Jeff, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you just explain for anyone who might be watching at home or in the, just what that search entails, like how are you?
Oh, for the director?
For the director, the new director?
Sure, so we'll do a search where we have parents involved, members of CPAC, teachers, administrators, school community members, community members, it'll be a full-blown search. And then, Special Education Director and Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent also involve the school committee more than, say, a principal search will. So school committee would have final appointment rights on that, based on a recommendation. So what I was thinking in terms of that structure, is that we would have one group go through and then bring, say, one, two, or three, hopefully three candidates to me and two members of the school committee. So we have a subcommittee of three, and then we would make that final recommendation to the school committee as a whole for that appointment.[1735.58] the school committee as a whole for that appointment. But it's, you know, like the other, the other search has been very inclusive, having people involved, and you've been on them, you've been on them, you know what it's like. And we'll go from there. Right now, it's just, I just needed to see what the best timetable would be for hiring because we need to see, we can't do it too early where someone wouldn't leave their district, but we have to get out there soon enough where other districts aren't ahead of us. So we have to just kind of time that just right. So I'm going to talk to the folks at Except and Tech and kind of get a, they have a pretty good sense of who's going to be leaving, who's looking, like that kind of thing. So we don't want to be in a situation where we're competing against other highly desirable districts.
Do we need, do we contract with Except or Tech or Nezdeck to facilitate that search, or is that something we just do?
No, we could do that, yeah. We can do that. Other places have done that?
I mean, is that your plan? I know it's still months away, but...
No, I think, I think we would do it on our own and not expand that. I think we would do it in-house. Like I said at the meeting before, we've had inquiries from sitting directors in the area, Metro West, that have inquired about the positions. I think we'll have a good pool. It's a good position.
The people that are out on maternity, are they out for just, are they out the year?
Some are, so everyone's different. Yeah, some are out for the year, some are out for eight to twelve weeks, some are out for the...
So the ones that say long-term sub are probably out, not the whole year?
They could be out, they could be out the whole year, or they could be out, everyone's different. There's, we got a few of them.
Long-term sub, twelve weeks.
Yeah, we have a few of them.
I see, okay.
And Jeff, how would you facilitate inviting parents, like the past, in your blog or something, or rather announce if you're interested?
Right, yeah, same thing, we'll send email out to parents, yeah.
Central office, okay.
I know the folks at CPAC, I mentioned it to Tanya, who's here tonight, I mentioned it to her.
Right.
They'll definitely be, that leadership will be a big part of that, and then anyone else that would want to be a part of that, too. We'll get them in there. Same thing we've done with the principals.
Great.
So I'll give you in September an updated list of this, once we finalize everything. So we have our new teacher orientation and induction starts tomorrow and Wednesday, so tomorrow's the kickoff, and I put that in your packet as well, the scheduled events for that. Kim Cave's done a real nice job with that. She's done a lot of updates. The laws changed a little bit on, the regulations changed a little bit on the induction mentoring, so she's really done a great job with that in the last couple of years. There needs to be additional meetings that didn't have to happen before. But as you can see, full slate tomorrow with all the administrators, having a conversation with each one, going over the evaluation process with Kim, overview of the induction mentoring program, and then the afternoon payroll and benefits with Michael, and then staff resources with Francine, and then Teacher Association will come in, Bonnie Rambertis will come in, welcome them, give them all the information they need for the association as well. And then the next day is the boot camp for technology, which they do three hours of technology, which is great. Though, it's a little overwhelming because if you're someone that hasn't been in a one-to-one environment, it could be a little overwhelming, but they do a nice job with that. We have all those teachers that haven't been in a one-to-one that are going into either Blake or the high school, have additional training through the fall that helps them out through that process, so. Just, it's really well done, and I think that the feedback we get from first-year teachers, that was extremely helpful for them. It's not just the way it used to be in the old days where, you know, here's your key and the manuals and good luck. You know, we really do support teachers and give them what they need in that regard. Anything else on the staffing changes?
No, I think we're good.
What are we missing? Are there any...
Couple of aides positions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape. I think it's just only two positions left that we need.
Okay.
Yeah. We're in good shape. There's been a lot of hiring going on with the principals interviewing, and the nice thing is that teachers come in over the summer to be part of that interview process, which is nice. Those that can do that, and it's very well received.
Okay, so moving on to old business, any donations?
We have two donations that I'd asked you to approve this evening. First one is one hundred eighty-five dollars for the Medfield Public Schools in memory of Helen Gould, retired teacher from the Medfield Public Schools. So the story behind this is Helen taught here for many, many years, passed away in the spring, and in her obituary said, "If anyone wants to give any money, please donate to the public, Medfield Public Schools." So that was nice. So we got one hundred eighty-five dollars donated to the public schools from Helen's family and friends. And then forty-three dollars and seven cents for the Wheelock School from the Target Reward Program. So that's all we have now. I'd ask that you approve those, please.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moving on, it's your, the superintendent's report to the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a few things to go over, the strategic plan update, so the draft I sent you, we are still working on that and updating it. We will have a finalized draft for you at the September meeting. We worked with Nezdeck two weeks ago, again, to get feedback. They sent it out to their whole crew and gave feedback to us. We had our leadership retreat last week and finalized some of the changes that we needed to make on that. We're in really good shape, it's more just the formatting and putting that all together. So I'll have a pretty final draft for you, but in September, if there's any changes you want to make at that meeting, we can make changes and we'll get it out to the community, post it online, and we'll, we've already started using it, some of the decisions we've made in District, which has been good, to have something to fall back on and not just what we kind of felt like that day. We followed the document and made some decisions based on that. So would you rather, before the eighteenth, I send you the almost-final draft, and then you can either approve or not approve, or make recommendations for changes on the eighteenth, and then I can revise again, or how would you want me to do that? It's up to you. I can do that, or I can give you the final final and then make changes off that?
If we get changes before the meeting on the nineteenth and then discuss it at the nineteenth meeting.
Okay, let's do that.
And then approve it at the following meeting?
Let's do that, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
So we would approve it at the October meeting, then that means?
Is that what you're saying, Chris?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want everyone to be clear, on the same page.
Good. But again, great process, and it's now just the tweaking that we need to, and the formatting that we need to get so it presents well. The data's all there, now it's just presenting well. The turf and track project update, again, I'd said that earlier in the facilities, we should be finished by Wednesday, and then the track will start on September twelfth and take ten days to two weeks to complete that. Our Wheelock Boiler Project, same thing, we're ninety percent complete on that, and we should be online right either the start of school or shortly thereafter, so we'll be in great shape for that. Elementary School Day, met with the principals again this morning, and schedules again are great, they're in really good shape. The buses went out a few weeks ago, and Michael's been handling some of those bus problems and questions, I should say. Interestingly enough, a lot of the questions came from fifth-grade parents where their kids go into the middle school, and we never touched the middle school and high school runs. So those stayed the same. But it's, but the middle school, high school runs aren't as accommodating, I should say, as the elementary runs are. So folks just thought that we changed those. So we've made some adjustments and some changes where we need to make them, but as we said in June, I mean, there's, we had to consolidate, for this to work, we had to consolidate some stops. It just had to work out that way. And it's not unreasonable on a sidewalk street for a kid to walk down two houses for a bus stop. It's maybe different, but it's not unreasonable, you know, so that's where we are with that. And we're hopeful that everything goes well in those first couple of days. We've done some trial runs and we think it's going to be fine, but, you know, it's always different when all that traffic's there, and everyone's hyped up for that first couple of days.
Jeff, did the Gary Orell bus stop get moved?
It did.
Okay.
It did.
And I think we said this in September, too, there are always like a couple of weeks where there's some glitches and things that need to be worked out, and so...
Yeah, no matter what. But when, so on a regular year when there's not many changes, you still have that. When you do a complete overhaul of the elementary transportation system, there's going to be some glitches, no doubt about it.
Right.
There's no doubt. And I think most of the parents have been great about it. I got a lot of nice emails back to me with feedback, and people just have questions, you know, we've been addressing those as they come, and it's been great having Michelle on board because she's been going out and checking the stops with Michael. Before we sent those out, the chief, Michael and I went out and did all the stops, and now as questions come in, Michelle and Michael are doing those, so it works out well. So we'll see, we'll see what that September meeting is like. I'm sure we'll have some feedback by then.
I think it was good to release those schedules so early, or the stops, I think, so early, so people could, if they've actually looked at them...
And we don't post them anymore, right? We just, we send them out to parents in a PDF, and no longer we post them for the world to see, and not put them in the newspaper anymore, so if someone needs a clarification, they have to contact us and we'll do that. And that's really just in a response to safety concerns, you know, where if the bus stops are easily accessible to anyone online, then, you know, we don't know, we don't want to fall in the wrong hands, so now we just send directly to the parents. So that seems to be, worked out fairly well, worked out well last year. But they have, some routes have changed. And the other piece is the bus driver piece, so we don't assign the bus drivers, the bus company does that.
Ah.
So we have no control over how that works. I know there was a couple of bus drivers that have changed that have had the routes for a long, long time, and we got some feedback on that, but we have no control over that.
Okay.
That's the bus company. And just in terms of recognition, just real happy about the way the summer projects went for the teachers at R and D. We'll have a focus on a few of those in September, October, so you get a sense of what the teachers did. A lot of good work in preparation for this school year. I know that they're excited to come back, and they've been working in their rooms for the last few weeks, and we've extended hours in the schools last week and this week so that teachers could come in and not spend their entire day there, they could come in at night if they wanted to, so that's worked out fairly well, too. But excited for the new start and looking forward to our opening day kickoff next Monday on the twenty-ninth, which you're all invited to if you can make it. Looking forward to that. It's always a great, and a lot of energy in the room when we start, and everyone's excited, so looking forward, every year I look forward to that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or anything they want to add?
So can I just address a couple of things in the future agenda?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So the opening reports, you know, that comes up every year, FY sixteen closed, so the fiscal year close comes up every year. So there's two things I want to, one is the Special Education audit report. So we felt that it made more sense to do that in September when everyone's back, when, if you didn't know, we started posting the meetings, the agenda's on the website for this meeting, we'll do that every month now, post them on there so everyone has it ahead of time. And it just made sense that everyone's back for the September nineteen meeting, and if folks want to come to that, it's a lot easier to come to the meeting in September if you're around versus on vacation in August. So we want to be transparent about that and do it when everyone's around, and so that's why we changed that. Originally, we were going to do it for this meeting. And then the strategic plan report, where our goal was to have everything done by this meeting, and we're still in good shape, but it'll be done for the next one. So those are the two that are on there.
Oh, and Jeff, sorry, a few people have asked me about that panorama survey.
Right.
Do you want to give an update?
Yeah, so we got, I was mentioning to you today, we have that in a PDF that's going to be posted online, too. The other thing that we did, too, over the summer, is made a PDF of sections of the school committee policy book, and that's going to be posted online, too, so you can just click on each section. It won't be every policy, but the section, and you can scroll down, so it's not looking at the eight-zillion-page book that the policy manual is, it's going to be by section. So that'll be up on the website, probably the end of next week.
Okay. And so if that's it, I guess we'll make a motion to adjourn?
Please, Madam Chair, I just want to show on the budget, we talked, you know, last year we had to make quite a few, we made some significant reductions in our budget requests we have, of course, the past several years, and we've talked with the warrant committee pretty openly about the need, county-wide, for an operational override, and my experience that ends up, very often the schools end up bringing that forward because we can mobilize people, and that's fair. I mean, it's hard to get people out to vote for an operational override to increase certain services that they don't necessarily see every day, and so that, you know. Well, I get a little frustrated with it, it probably makes sense politically and in terms of fairness, but in the past, when we've been at least considering an override, one thing we've done is, as these school opening meetings happen, are they pin, they're not really pin nights?
The pin night, right, yeah, they are kind of pin nights, yeah.
Okay, so I lose track of what we call them, but we've had somebody go and just talk a little bit about budget priorities for the year.
Yeah.
And, you know, some of the things we haven't been able to do in the course of the past couple of years, to, just to start orienting people, parents, voters, the warrant committee, towards that possibility. And, you know, obviously, we don't have any budget for the next fiscal year in front of us, we're not saying we need an override, that we, you know, we want an override, but in view of, you know, population changes with the new forty-B, God knows what's going to happen with the next forty-B on Dale Street. I mean, it's clear to me, and I think it's clear to a lot of people in the warrant committee, although I certainly don't speak for them, that at some point in the near future, we may need an operational override. So I wonder if, you know, at the risk of committing us all to more nights, if it makes sense this year again to go to those pin nights and, you know, I think the last time we put together some bullet points, maybe even a couple of slides that we all gave.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thanks for bringing that up.
It makes sense.
That does, because the pin nights start fast.
They may start before then, if we need...
I think they do start before the nineteenth, so I don't know about the Little Guys Memorial and Wheelock, I don't know.
Yeah, usually the week of the twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, like those three weeks.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, last time we did that, we actually knew we were going for an override, and we actually knew sort of what we wanted to say? What would we say this time?
Well, last time we structured the override so that it was specifically a...
Technology.
Technology, which otherwise would have been a capital expense, but by putting it into the operating expense, we effectively carried that money forward. But, yeah, I guess I don't know the answer to that question, but I do think it's important to start getting, whether it's at these pin nights or some later date.
Yeah.
We do need to start with that message.
So Mike Sullivan and I just had conversations over the summer about, you know, what it looks like, and it was more of, you know, if you guys can hold your budget under this percentage increase, then, you know, we don't need an override. But we really didn't get into any of the details, more than just kind of broad conversation about what an override looked like and would we need one or whatever.
But with the shared expenses, even if we did hold ourselves to two-and-a-half percent, and the town, the town can't continue to sacrifice in the same way that the school can't continue to sacrifice, and, you know, we've all had these conversations on the warrant committee, or, you know, those of us who go to the warrant committee, had these conversations with them, it can't last forever. And we have broken a real long streak, I mean, there was a long streak in Medfield of overrides every one, two, or three years.
Right.
And, you know, now it's been...
Now it's been, because that was the year before I was on...
Six to seven years.
Before I was on the committee, so...
And I'm not saying that I'm dying to raise my own taxes or anybody else's, but if we're going to do it, I think we ought to start messaging for it now and thinking about how we would structure that. And maybe, you know, these pin nights aren't the right time, but as we get into the fall season and even before the budgets start to get built, I think it's something that we really need to keep in mind.
Right, that's a good point.
I think the pin nights are good places because you get parents who are, you know, most of these overrides are for the schools, so you get parents who are the most receptive audience, and they're all ideally at these...
But aren't we in a good position to actually speak about something, because we've done the strategic plan forums, I mean, we have...
But it might need...
Talking about the pay scale next year, you know, maybe, so we do have some information. It's not like we're going to go in there and maybe, we do have priorities, you know, um...
We do.
You know, the salaries, special education, I mean, there's...
But it might be, it might make more sense to have that conversation with parents in the context of an adopted strategic plan, and in the context of, you know, the special education report, once we've already received all those.
Right, 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 right.
So maybe it makes more sense to, you maybe hold a series of public hearings in the late fall, once we've adopted those. I just wanted to get on it.
That's good to hear on the radar, yeah.
Yeah.